I now call to order the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We now have a quorum, and I'd like to get, I would like to have Andrew to introduce our newest member.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to introduce a new member who was appointed to the board, in town, a permanent member, so not an alternate, and she'll be with us for the next couple of years, Ms. Jane Bibella. So everybody, make sure you say hello to Jane before we leave tonight, and tonight's her first meeting, and I think we got a good one to break her in a little bit. I also do want to mention that Mr. Hall's been reappointed, so he's got another three-year term, so congratulations. And then I also want to introduce the newest staff member, Link Hamlin. He's going to be working with staff, kind of keeping up with the development on sites, working with the, I guess, the GCs and citizens and whatnot, so welcome addition to staff, we definitely need it. So tonight's a night of introductions, and again, like with Ms. Bibella, please say hello to Link before you leave tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. I'd like to welcome you as well officially, and you also. The, are there any changes to the agenda?
I just want to make a note that under New Business Item C, the text amendment should be TA twenty-five dash oh-five instead of oh-four, so when it was copied and pasted from last month, that forgot to be changed, so it's case oh-five.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, motion by Barry, second by Tanya, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Conflict of interest statement: In accordance with North Carolina Government's Ethics Act, is the duty to every board member to avoid both conflict of interest and appearance of conflict, and are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this board if there's a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. If a board member has a known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board today, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matter involved. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest in any matter coming before the board today? Okay, approval of meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve the regular minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five? Okay, motion by Barry, second by Tanya, are there any changes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, under New Business, case number RZ twenty-five dash oh-five, Darlene Payne, five oh-eight South Main Street, request to rezon property located on five oh-eight South Main Street from suburban residential to local commercial. I will now turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you. A little bit of background about this case, the applicant is Darlene Payne. The property owner is Stephanie Payne. The property size is approximately half an acre. It's currently zoned suburban residential. The request tonight is to zone the property to the local commercial district, which is a fairly new district. We had a case last month that was looking to do the same thing in the same vicinity. This isn't not, there was not a site plan submitted with this request, is it's what we call a traditional rezoning, meaning not conditional, so a site plan will be reviewed at the time of development, if developed and if approved. The property is not within the town limit, but if, I believe the property does have town utilities, so annexation will be at the discretion of the property owner, since it is in the ETJ. The local commercial district, the intent is small-scale commercial, basically less than an acre. It's a less intense commercial district for commercial and service uses, meant to serve the local area. It allows for live-work opportunities located on major thoroughfares or at crossroads that aren't really suitable for residential development. And anything that's more intensive, as far as uses go, would be required to come back with conditional zoning. And I put intensive in quotations because there really isn't anything that intensive in the district as there is. Location, it's on South Main Street, just a little bit north where South Main Street meets Eastway, the southern side of Eastway Drive. Autumn Leaf Road is about three properties to the north, it's outlined here in red. There's a church on the, I guess that would be the southwestern corner of Autumn Leaf and South Main Street, probably familiar with the area, and there's a pest company that's located nearby as well. My clicker has decided to die. Okay, I think I got it back. Okay, current zoning, property is zoned RS, which is same as everything you see in purple. Again, the property is outlined in red. The properties you see here in this, I guess that'd be like a rose color. Those are zoned neighborhood commercial with commercial uses. Properties just across the street are zoned office institutional. We've got some heavy industrial down Eastway Drive, and then there's some highway business that's a little bit further north up the road. Property in yellow is RT or Town Residential, those are basically quarter-acre, single-family lots. Land use map, the land use map does call for this area to be medium-density residential. There is some high-density residential to the north, and also some office institutions to the north. Medium-density residential are primarily intended for detached, single-family residential development in close proximity to commercial areas and arterial transportation corridors. Requires public utilities to be available at the site, densities are two to three units per acre, and associated zoning districts, suburban residential, town residential. Staff will recommend approval of this case. Basically, the local commercial district is newly established, and it wasn't in existence when the future land use map was amended in twenty-two. We do recommend approval because it's in close proximity to commercial uses. We think that's the way that this corridor is going, and also with the size of the lot, an intense commercial use isn't even possible, so the live-work thing makes sense at this location. Again, this is an advisory board, as you all know, so the decision tonight is an advisory decision to the town council, and the council will make its final decision at the October ninth council meeting, and that meeting will take place here at seven PM. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions the board has for me.
Anyone have any questions for Andrew at this time? I will now open the meeting up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this request?
I'm Darlene, that's all. That's all, and it's really noisy there.
All right, all right. Yes, could you please sign in since you did speak? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Well, what? I close the public comment time first. Okay, I'll now close the public comment time. Now, questions from the board?
So, how can we vote on something that's not in the town? That's my question, because I think that's kind of backwards. That we need to vote on whether it can come into the town, and if, once it's in the town, we can vote on it. How do you vote on something that's not in the town?
Okay, so with this particular case, the property's in extraterritorial jurisdiction, so it's under the Town of Troutman zoning jurisdiction. So you're voting on the zoning of the property, so you have every right to vote on this. So it's, we control the zoning of the property, so the planning board would be able to vote on it. But, but to kind of address your question, like, I'll use the most recent case, that Clontz Hill rezoning case. You know, you did make a recommendation on it prior to the annexation. The annexation only goes to the council level, so your recommendation can be made, the council votes on the annexation and the rezoning the same night. So typically, they'll approve the annexation first, if they do approve it, so when the council makes the final decision on the zoning change, they had already approved the annexation, it's in the town limit.
This is not going to be in the town limit, but it's okay.
This is just one that we already control the zoning. Unless, unless they request us to take them into the town.
If they want water and sewer, they'll...
Sure. Sorry, I know you gotta like, say if it's public or council. So if we did request voluntary annexation, doesn't that mean that the town has to provide you with sewer though?
If, if the sewer is available, that's, that's a major talking point right now.
Right, it's a bad place for sewer.
That's right, that's right.
I guess that's why I asked that question.
We, we've gotten a number of annexation requests on the exterior of the town limits, just for water alone. So it doesn't necessarily, if sewer's not available, and the property owner is not willing, I guess, to pay for that sewer extension, typically, they'll just want the water, and we'll annex them for water. And they're well aware of that when they come in.
Right, so you would just turn down the annexation?
They would, they would approve the annexation for the water portion alone.
But deny the sewer?
Yeah, yeah, just because it wouldn't, it's not feasible to extend the sewer line.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion regarding rezoning of RZ twenty-five dash oh-five?
I will make a motion for recommendation to the Troutman Planning and Zoning Board regarding zoning district to rezone as requested to local commercial zoning.
Okay, we have a motion by Tanya, second by Daryl. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those against, opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, we now need a motion regarding consistency statement for rezoning RZ twenty-five dash oh-five. Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion by Tanya, second by Daryl. Why don't you just take it out to your car? Okay. Okay, motion by Tanya, second by Daryl. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Case number RZ twenty-five dash oh-seven. C two C Land Development, request to rezone two properties located west of Charlotte Highway and south of Flowerhouse Loop from Arden County Residential Agriculture to Troutman Highway Business. I will now turn it over to Andrew.
Okay, I'll just start by kind of going over what we just talked about with annexation. So this particular case is in the county's jurisdiction. There's an annexation component that runs concurrent with this case. The board can make a recommendation on the zoning. The council will hear the annexation and the rezoning case at the same time in October. So that night, if they approve the annexation, they can approve the rezoning request, or the zoning request is on this to commercial. So the situation we were talking about with the Clontz Hill case, very similar to what you're going to hear right now. The applicant for this case is C two C Land Development, the property owner is Donna Chase. It's two separate parcels, acreage is about twenty and a half acres. Current zoning is Arden County Residential Agricultural. The request is to zone this to the Town of Troutman Highway Business District. There is a request for annexation running concurrent with this, and council will hear that annexation the same night it hears the rezoning public hearing. This is a standard rezoner request, and no site plan has been submitted as part of this request. If development does happen, we will review that site plan at that time. Location, so Charlotte Highway runs north-south. The southern portion where Flowerhouse Loop comes into Charlotte Highway is just to the north of the site. The property that the ABC store is supposed to go on, the new ABC to the south, just to the north of this. And a little over a year and a half ago, this property to the north of that property was zoned highway business and approved by the council as well. Current zoning map, what you see here in blue is highway business. So you see you got some highway business just to the north of it. There's a piece of highway business to the south at West Moreland Road and Charlotte Highway. And then you've got highway business to the north of Charlotte Highway where the new Food Lion is. There's an apartment complex going here, the Zaxby's is starting to go up. So there's some highway business in the vicinity. Residential agriculture, what is currently zoned, is what's shown in white. Land use map, so this particular property is not addressed by the future land use map. As you can see, that the area in gray here wasn't addressed when this plan was created, and I'll explain why on the next slide. So the Troutman Strategic Plan does not address this area. The reason for that is because when the map was drafted, Troutman and Mooresville had an annexation agreement, and basically, anything on the southern side of Flowerhouse Loop was to go to the Town of Mooresville. In two thousand and twenty-three, the line got moved, and then again, in two thousand and twenty-five, Troutman and Mooresville struck up another annexation agreement. So the property, I'm going back to the main map and show you, so basically, no, we're not zoomed out enough, the way that it kind of goes now is the annexation agreement goes down just to the south of Shepherd Road, down near the school. Anything on the eastern side of Highway twenty-one would still be the Town of Troutman, up to where you get to Parkertown Road, which is not shown on this map either, but anything north of, the north side of Parkertown going north is now in the Town of Troutman's annexation agreement boundary. So these properties are now to be annexed into Troutman. And I know that was a lot of language, so if you have any questions, let me know. Okay, so with this particular request, staff is recommending approval. We think it's consistent with the vision along twenty-one, we do believe that Charlotte Highway will go commercial. And I do want to go back to the land use map for just a second here. So the properties across Charlotte Highway are meant to develop as high-density residential. And then you've got this reddish kind of color, these are interchange commercial properties. You've got this to the north, and you also got this little node here to the south. And highway business does fit within both of these designations. So again, that's another reason why the planning staff is recommending approval of the request tonight. And similar to the last case, this will be heard October ninth by the council at seven PM. And that's, any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Andrew?
I do have a question, not really about the case, but you said the north side of Parkertown is now Troutman?
The north side of Parkertown, if it's annexed into a jurisdiction, it would be Town of Troutman, where prior to, about two months ago, when the two towns struck this annexation agreement, it was on the Mooresville side of that line, but...
On the other side of twenty-one, Shepherd's Church, and all that going south, that would still be Mooresville?
I'd have to, I'd have to check and see exactly where the church is, but anything that's on the, I would say, the eastern side of Charlotte Highway, basically, coming down from Shepherd Road to the north would be the Town of Troutman. So if it's south of there, it'd be Mooresville.
Is there a, a new map online?
I don't know if there's an annexation boundary map online, but if you'd like to view it, just let me know, I can shoot you a copy, yeah. Yeah, typically, I don't think I've ever seen an annexation boundary map, one of those agreement maps online, but it's, we've got one we can share.
No, just, I wonder if Mooresville, did they have a plan for this? Just kind of curious what they had it planned for, or if they had one?
Mooresville had no intention to ever extend its utilities that far north, so I don't think they ever really looked at this area in depth.
So they didn't do anything with it?
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. I'll now open the meeting up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this rezoning request?
Good evening, my name is Gerald Grant, employed by Jordan Grant and Associates, who are the engineers and surveyors for this developer. I've been working on this property for a little bit more than three years. The developer has been trying to assemble a parcel large enough to do a retail development on the corner of Charlotte Highway and Flowerhouse Loop. And this property is in the Lake Norman watershed. So in order to get sufficient square footage to have allowed the impervious area required for this retail development, which is an upscale grocery pharmacy. This additional twenty acres was needed just to provide square footage so that we could achieve the percentage of impervious required on the watershed waters. I happen to have a boundary map of the watershed, Troutman Agreement.
Thank you.
I would be happy to share with you. And so the, like Andrew so proficiently made in his presentation, the corner pieces on the corner of Flowerhouse and Charlotte Highway are already annexed and rezoned to highway business. And these properties would be attached to that along with the ABC property to create a large enough parcel for this retail development. Do you have to answer any other questions if you have any?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this request? Okay, I will now close the public comment time. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion regarding recommendation for RZ twenty-five dash oh-seven?
I make a motion to, someone's requested the highway business zoning.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Barry, second by Tanya, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, we need a motion regarding consistency statement for RZ twenty-five oh-seven.
Make a motion, while the property is not addressed in the future land use map, the request is consistent with the zoning of adjacent property. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as it proposes to allow commercial development in areas of Troutman where it is appropriate.
Okay, motion by Barry, second by Tanya, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, case number TA twenty-five dash oh-five, temporary signs, request to amend section six point four point five, temporary signs to allow for longer duration of time that temporary signs can be displayed for not-for-profit events. I will now turn it over to Andrew.
Okay, thank you. This recommendation is brought forward by staff, excuse me, and it is at the direction of the council, requesting to amend the UDO to permit temporary signs advertising not-for-profit events for a longer duration that is currently allowed for in the UDO. Basically, temporary signs, the UDO limits temporary signs for not-for-profit events to a maximum of ten days prior to that event. This amendment would lengthen the amount of time added, and it would also add some regulations on where they can go and how big they can be. So what we're recommending, the changes you see are in red. So currently, for signs for not-for-profit temporary events, they can be placed onsite up to ten days prior to the event. Council wants to change that to up to thirty days prior to the event. And the way that they're looking to do this is allow for one on-premises sign, no larger than a three-by-five on the site. And then they'll also allow for two banners, no larger than a four-by-eight, and these can be permitted off-site at designated locations where the Town of Troutman actually has signage. You probably noticed some banners along the Greenway, along Eastway. There's about three locations in town where the town can advertise events. So the town does want to open this up for not-for-profit events and allow those at those locations, maximum of two at a time for a single event. And those would be permitted by the Parks and Rec staff. And again, those would be thirty days prior to the event. So that's the basis and the basic changes that are being requested. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
The banner at the Arden County Fairgrounds, how big is that? Is that, will that affect them? Because I know that they put those out, actually, thirty days, I think.
Yeah, it should, it should not affect them at all. This, this is not going to affect the Arden County Fairgrounds.
Have we, have we, have we not been allowing our nonprofits? Because I thought, I mean, I know that we have banners out there for longer than ten days.
It, it wasn't, it wasn't addressed, so whether they were, whether they're not, it's the Parks and Rec staff that kind of approves those banners, so I'm not exactly sure how they've been handling it in the past, but this just says, you can do it.
Any other questions for Andrew?
So I'm just curious, what is the difference, why is the sign different? Why, why is there a difference? And why does it have to be smaller on the location? What effect would that have?
I just think from maybe visibility standpoint, I'm not exactly sure what the, you know, the reasoning behind that was, that was just the direction.
But if you look at the, at the event center, the Ham Day sign is up, and it's very small, and it's not really, it's, it's hanging in the air like that, it's not very visible.
It just seems like, I'm just curious to know why on the location it would be any different than what it would be on Parks and Rec? Or on the Greenway?
I think the, the signs at the Parks and Rec, they're just fixed signs, they're just four-by-eight, that's what fits it. I think the council just wanted to see a smaller sign if it's going to be out there for thirty days onsite. That was basically the direction we were given to present to you tonight.
I'm just curious, you're adult. I think that, I put three by, three feet by five feet, I think would be fine, really for that onsite. Most of the onsite is across from the Greenway and not on the Greenway side. And we still can do the four-by-eights for the big signs for the town to put up. It will increase visibility for the big signs, because it'd be up thirty days instead of ten days, which is good if you've got an event, say like Ham Day down here, that's got pre-orders. People will see that thirty days instead of ten days ahead of time.
The smaller signs, they're up, this one's not very colorful.
This one's not very colorful and I think that's part of the reason that it's not visible. It kind of blends into the sky. But I think that is, that it'll help visibility on that side of the road instead of the big signs too. It's, I just think it's more visibility even three by five.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay. I will now open the meeting up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this text amendment? Okay, I will now close the public comment time. Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion regarding recommendation for text amendment TA 25-05?
I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment case number, case number TA 25-05.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Tanya, second by Barry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Okay.
This thing that's broken, it's bothering me every time I move my hand.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we need a motion regarding consistency statement for TA 25-05.
I make a motion regarding consistency of this action, that this text amendment is consistent with the 28th Strategic Plan and unified development, development ordinance, and reasonable and in the public interest as it is consistent for the goals of the Troutman Strategic Plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Tanya, second by Barry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Old business, we don't have any old business, other business?
Um, I, I do want to make a couple of announcements. One, we did get funding in the budget this year to basically develop a new comprehensive land use plan. So that map that you saw where there's some areas that don't make sense anymore or aren't addressed, that will be addressed. And we released a request for qualifications, looking for a consultant to lead that charge for us. And the period for the request for qualifications closed last Friday, September 19th. And we did receive 10 different bids, so we'll have to go through those bids and hopefully as a staff, come up with a consensus on who we want to move forward with and get approval from the council. But that process, a planning board will be involved with updates and we'll probably get some kind of a steering committee together where we may be asking a couple of you to sit on and help us steer that thing in the direction the, the town wants to see it move forward in. So exciting process. I think the plan is definitely a little dated and a little, just out of order, so to speak. So I think we're, we're in need of a new plan. And then the second announcement I did want to make is we have a, a conditional zoning request. I don't know if it'll be in front of you in October or November, it depends on the traffic study. But it's, it's for a mini mart slash gas station on the corner of State Park and Perth Roads. The main thing I want to mention is the required community meeting that the developers required to hold is on October 2nd at 6:00 PM in this building. So those are the two things I just wanted to make the board aware of.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Tanya, second by Lauren. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, stay after the meeting.
We need to glue that. Kim, did you see that?
Why don't you complain?
The, um, the little strip on the side is coming out over here. Somebody just needs to glue it.
It catches your arm, doesn't it?
And it had me so out of whack, I said, when I heard you say they had to follow suit.
It's disorienting.
Well, it's been around a long time, you could probably know everything.
I'm good, you?
The next one will be...
Well, yeah, I was going to.
Yeah, because I live there.
If he wants it, mate.